We're on the record.
We do have one public here this evening involving the 2021 budget. Let's do a roll call, please.
Pullman, present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Here.
Neb.
Present.
Brown.
Yes.
Mohler.
Present by Zoom. We're going to start off with offering a prayer by Councilmember Robert Brown, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Dear God, please allow us to make the right decisions and choices in our daily lives. Guide us to become better people every day and influence our decision to make the world a better place. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now go to special presentations. And I believe we have Kay Farrar there.
That's correct, sir.
Okay.
Just need one moment. I just need one moment to share the proper screen. Okay. And. Okay, we are set. Excuse me.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council and citizens of the city of Hamilton. I wanted to come to you tonight to bring an update for COVID-19 for December 2nd, 2020. So we're going to start out with the countywide data. So currently, there are 17,186 cases in Butler County with 12,070 presumed to be recovered. The ZIP code of 45011 is the highest in Butler County and ranked sixth in the state for today's data. However, if cumulative over the last two weeks, it's ranking number one. We don't want to be number one in this, so let's get to it and bring us down a few notches. Countywide hospitalizations are at 675 and the countywide deaths are at 152. For the city of Hamilton, we receive approximately 50 to 55 new cases per day, and then we isolate the case and quarantine the individuals that are exposed to that person. So we are still doing contact tracing as best as we can. Families are still the most trackable transmission in the city, so oftentimes, once a family member gets it, it kind of goes through the whole household. The city of Hamilton's current COVID cases are at 2,029. Yesterday was at 1,979, so there's that 50-plus today. The city of Hamilton deaths are at 37. Yesterday was at 35. I will tell you that there is now a lag. There's always been a lag with the death certificate data because I wait till I receive the death certificate and they actually list COVID as a cause or contributing factor for death. But now there's a lag in the reporting just because a lot of these things come electronically and go right into the Ohio disease reporting system, but some of them still come via lab. There's a lot of labs that aren't hooked up with ELR, electronic lab, reporting, so those have to be hand-entered by myself and Sue and our three contact tracers that we have. So there is a lag time. We're doing the best we can. I didn't do any work on Thanksgiving, but I did do my toll on the other day, so I skipped a day. Next slide. Okay. This is a picture. Somebody like, some people like pictures, so this is the countywide data. Again, if you go to the state site, you are able to go to the dashboard, and if you click on Butler County, it will show you the number of cases. It also shows you that, I still hear from a lot of people, that we've already flattened the curve. We don't need to do anything. If you look at that first one, we have not flattened the curve. We are going straight up to the heavens. So let's stop that. Let's get onto a different path. Let's flatten it a little bit. Okay. Next slide. So on the key indicators, I like to look at this slide because it gives you that 21-day trend for the state of Ohio. Now, this is all state data, but again, if you look at that barcode on the right-hand side, you kind of get a feeling that we're, again, on this trajectory that we don't want to be on. We want to move to a different place. Is that the next one?
That's the next one.
Okay. So pop-up testing, if you'll go to the next one, sorry. Pop-up testing, I wanted to give you an update. So we ran the pop-up testing on November 18th behind Fort Hamilton Hospital, and the National Guard was there and actually conducted the testing. We just did the assistance and sponsored it. I'd really like to reach out and thank Kettering Health for allowing us to use both their site and their logistics, so they provided the tents, the tables, the chairs. They had a couple staff members out there helping us flow traffic. And I want to give a huge shout-out to Jacob Stone, Brandon Sauber, and the EMA for their parts and their assistance. It was just an awesome day. It was very well-run, at least from my perspective. I know there was one individual that complained that they waited a long time. We had a throughput of 125 cars per hour. This was calculated by the EMA. It's part of the reason I had the EMA there. So we went 125 cars per hour, and they had multiple people in them with an average wait time of 30 minutes. The positivity rate out of that was 20%. There were 122 positives. We did have six inconclusive tests. What is an inconclusive? So an inconclusive test usually means one of two things. Either they were tested too soon after they were exposed to the virus, because remember, this is a PCR. It's an actual DNA of the virus, and they didn't have enough time to have the DNA present. But it also wasn't not there, because it was showing that there was this squiggly line there. It also can happen if, unfortunately, they don't get far enough in the narys. I don't know if you've ever seen anybody do a COVID test or had one. It's not really a pleasant experience. They really, literally stick a swab, which is very long, in the back of your nose, and they're aiming to go back as far as until you, like, tear up or gag. So they may not have gotten in far enough. Now, if people want to know what they can do at this time to protect themselves and their family, these are my advice points. Stay home as much as possible. Wash your hands frequently and for 20 seconds, rubbing motion that goes between your fingers and all surfaces. Please wear a mask when you cannot maintain a social distance of six feet. Be sure your mask fits snugly across the sides of your face over here, and wear the mask over your nose and your mouth. Maintain six feet of social distance between you and everyone that does not live in your household, your immediate household. And your circle only includes your immediate household. Everybody else, wear a mask with. So on to the good topic for tonight, the vaccines. Yes, they are coming. So on November 30th, the Ohio Department of Health, along with the National Guard, did a practice of the distribution of the first vaccine to come out in a frozen form. So this is going to be a challenge for us. It's a new form of vaccine. We're not used to handling frozen vaccine. We definitely have always had freezer vaccines, but this is frozen. So they did a, we were able to watch it via video of it going on, and so there's points and amount of times that they have to remove it from the sub-zero freezers and put them into containers of dry ice to get them off, and it's like a couple of minutes of time. So they were timing all this out because we're busy getting ready for this. It's coming. So the first Pfizer vaccine, which is the first to get the clearance, will be rolled out sometime December 15th. They will go, the initial vaccine will go to six, or sorry, 10 very large hospital sites. In Region 6, which is what we belong to, it will be University Hospital down in Cincinnati. As more vaccine comes in, they will begin shipping to all the local health departments and other entities who have signed up to be vaccinators for this initiative. We are busy making plans. We plan daily now, hours a day, because there are lots of moving parts to this. As you can imagine, there will be a tiered system where Tier 1 and 1A is where we will start. That was voted on by the CDC, ACIP, which is the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practice. It is to begin with healthcare personnel and long-term care facility residents. And members of the long, of healthcare will include, but may not be exclusive, to hospitals, long-term care staff, outpatient clinics, home healthcare agencies, pharmacies, emergency EMS personnel, and then public health, but only public health that are going to be involved in the pods or points of dispensing. We won't give it to the whole health department, just the people. In our case, we have a very small health department. All of us will be on board at a point of dispensing because we're going to need all hands on deck. But it will be very strict guidelines of who gets it. That will be the first one rolled out. Pfizer is first. There are two additional companies that have now applied for emergency use authorization through the FDA, and I am very hopeful that we're forecasting forward to an end to all this. Mind you, this is the largest, this is way bigger than H1N1 I was around during that time. I mean, this literally has to go to everyone. It also has to go around the world. So it's a big endeavor for everyone. We're going to vaccinate as quick as we can. This vaccine can be made much quicker than the old types of vaccine. The old types of vaccine were cultured, so you literally had to have part of that DNA, and then you had to grow it and make it. This is being manufactured in laboratories, so it will be much faster rolled out, but there will be some tiers that we have to go through to get to everyone. So that's where we're at with vaccines. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, this is Susan.
Please.
You said, "We will immunize." So I don't, has a decision been made? Is this a hospital, your doctor, health departments?
It will be all hands on deck. There are lots of entities signing up. I believe the Ohio Department of Health told me they have 400 applications to become immunization providers for this vaccine. We're willing to share it with one and all because public health is a small entity. We're not big, and we need everyone's help. And I've been very grateful to have people reach out. Kettering Health has reached out. They want to be a part of it. They will help us. I said, "We will take all the help you can give to us." I'm quite sure even the long-term care facilities will probably vaccinate some of their own. So we're going to, we're going to need everyone to do this. So we don't want the limiting factor to be vaccines sitting in a refrigerator or freezer or sub-zero. We want them to be in arms. So we're going to, we're going to use everyone we can. Back in H1N1, we even had a lot of retired nurses come out and agree to help. The one compounding factor with COVID, obviously, we can't have, if you remember the fairground, we had a pod there, and we had everybody standing in line. You can't do that. They've got to be in cars because this is an airborne illness. So we're busy changing our plans a little bit, but we've been practicing for this for a long time, so that's what I felt like our four testing was, was a little bit of our feeling of how this was going to go, and I think it went pretty well. We've got to involve a lot of police, so for traffic control, we didn't quite have that set up well. That's my fault. I take that blame on it. I just didn't know how many were going to show up, like, even at nine o'clock, not at 10, but nine. It's like we were backed up onto Main Street already before we even opened up the pod, but I didn't have the National Guard yet there to start, so. But yeah, it's a, it's a big endeavor, but it will take, it will take everyone, one and all.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Kay, very much for the education.
Thank you.
Is there a second presentation? Mr. City Clerk?
That's correct, sir. We also will have a short presentation regarding conditional uses by our Planning Director, Liz Hayden.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I heard him say "short." I will be short. But I did want to come and talk to you about a proposed change to the conditional use process. Conditional uses are a zoning term that we use for types of uses that are appropriate in certain zoning districts if certain conditions exist. And what happens to determine that is that someone would apply, and the application would be reviewed by Planning Commission and City Council. And City Council's been getting about one conditional use application per meeting, so they see them pretty frequently. And we are wanting to propose a change in that process for your consideration. And so this is what we are proposing, that if City Council concurs with Planning Commission's recommendations, then City Council could approve the proposal through accepting the caucus report. So this would still give City Council final say, but the goal would be that we would shorten the timeline for most applicants. Typically, City Council has agreed with Planning Commission's recommendations, not always, but typically. And so for those applicants, this would change the timeline from three months down to six months or even shorter in some cases. And this shortened timeline can be helpful a lot of times for the applicant. Sometimes the applicant is involved in a real estate purchase, and it can be hard to manage that real estate transaction with a three-month timeline for due diligence. And the six-month timeline works a lot, or six-week timeline works a lot better for that. Sometimes there's construction involved in a project, and the difference can mean whether they can get the project started before the weather gets cold or not. But in this scenario, when City Council reviews during the caucus and decides that they, if they would like to have the project move forward to a first and second reading and vote, they may do that, and that would allow City Council to add conditions, get more information, or even reverse Planning Commission's recommendation. So it allows some flexibility in the process. Ultimately, City Council would have final approval still, and also, this process that we're proposing to you would be for conditional uses only. City Council also sees other kinds of applications from the Planning Department. For example, rezoning. A rezoning, a piece of property, is always going to be something that we'll want to see City Council vote on. Another example would be anything, if we're making a change to the city's comprehensive plan, we would want you to vote on that as well. So that is the summation of my presentation. Let me know if you have any questions.
Sounds to me like this is substance over form, and we, Council still retains the opportunity to have it be, go through a first and second reading. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, that makes sense to me. Any questions Council has? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We now go to Audience of Citizens, and due to safety reasons, social distancing alike, we've not been having a public audience of citizens. It's been pretty much handled through emails. Mr. City Clerk, have there been any kind of emails this week that need to be addressed at this particular meeting?
None to my knowledge, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And no one has signed any kind of a book at all or anything like that wanting to speak to us? Is that correct?
So we do have some people who've made entries into the Audience of Citizens sheet. One was Mr. Jim Lonnaman, and I gave him the same information you just said over the record. I gave him my contact information, and I'll be expecting a call from him soon. The only other entries I see on the sheet are for a different item on our agenda tonight, that is item number three on the caucus agenda regarding self-storage.
Great. Okay. So we'll finish Audience of Citizens and go to the consent agenda, which includes staff reports, caucus reports, some zoning matters, some financial reports. There will be no committee to hold this, this evening. So there's three items on the caucus agenda. Now, I believe there's been a request to pull item number three. Is that correct, Mr. City Clerk?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion that we pull item three from the caucus agenda?
Second.
Okay, I think that's a motion by Bob Brown, seconded by Councilmember Fear. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. Let's do a roll call vote on that, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Neb.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes. Do you want to read number three into the record, please? Mr. City Clerk?
A recommendation relative to a request to change the zoning of properties. 1710 South Erie Boulevard, 1700 South Erie Boulevard, 1746 South Erie Boulevard, 1766 South Erie Boulevard, 1796 South Erie Boulevard, Hamilton, Ohio. Changing the zoning from I to industrial to BPD, Business Plan Development Zoning District.
So we're going to hear from some folks on this particular caucus agenda item, and after they're done speaking, oh, do we want to hear from the city first on this? Is that correct or not?
That's if, if any city administration, if Ms. Hayden, I'm getting a shaken head, no.
I find not presenting and reading a PGL question.
Yeah, Ms. Hayden is in the audience. She will wait to see if we have any questions, but our applicants are in the audience today.
Okay. So let's go ahead and have the applicants go to the podium and give us their name and their address, and then proceed with their testimony, their comments.
Sure. One moment, please.
Good evening. My name is Richard Jones. I'm an architect with Jones &amp; Jones Associates. Our address is 6120 Peters Creek Road in Roanoke, Virginia. I'm here tonight representing TIA Incorporated, their real estate ownership. The petition that you have before you is a, has multiple items to it. The first part that was just read off was to change the overlaying zoning across the whole Hamilton Crossing Shopping Center, and the second one is to allow mini-storage in a property that's about to be vacant, which is the current Pease Warehouse Building Supply Center. Now, we have been before Planning Commission, and now we're here tonight. The staff report is very detailed on this project. I think they've covered all of the elements that need to be done. The few highlights, we will be dramatically increasing the landscaping on this property, redoing the fascia, the facade of the building, and making the signage across the whole shopping center more cohesive. There are, in the staff report, you'll see some 16 different items that we've all agreed to. Very good staff report. The big difference between this project now and when it went before Planning Commission is we were projecting the possibility of a vacant space, that being the Pease property. It is no longer projected. They have confirmed that they will be closing, and that is the major difference. The owner is here tonight to speak to that and what he is attempting to do to rectify that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm Alex Alahakuna. I'm the owner of Kia Real Estate Holdings and am owner of the Hamilton Crossing Shopping As Mr. Jones mentioned, I want to be here mainly to emphasize the economic impact of this project and why I would like this application approved, because in the Planning Commission meeting, that economic aspect was not very well, I think, projected in that meeting. The presentation was provided as the property is 90% occupied, but actually, as of now, it is 92% occupied. In the last six months, we lost two tenants for a total square footage, about 10,000. Now we have 16,000 vacant spaces, 16,000 square feet of vacant space already, which is a total of nine vacant spaces. And Mr. Pease has confirmed that he will be vacating at the end of his current term, which will be May 31st, 2021. He might, he requests, he might, he may want a couple of extra weeks or maybe a month or two to wrap up so that the transition will be smooth, but he is not, he has clearly indicated he will not, he's not planning to stay beyond this year. So this is very significant for me because when, if when Pease vacates, that 90, almost 91,000 square feet, the property's occupancy will drop to 46%. And so what I'm looking at is by, on June 1st, I'm looking at a property that will be 46% occupied. This has major implications for me, for one, to rent out a vacant space of 91,000 in this economy, in this area is extremely difficult. I personally know that because in the same property, I have another big box space, a 43,000 square foot space, which was old Marsh Grocery Store, which then was the J's Furniture Clearance Store. Just before I bought it, J's Furniture, they relocated to another location, and it was vacant for four years under my ownership from January of '16 till last year. It was vacant for four years and only, and I did everything I, it's possible to get it rented, but it was unsuccessful. And finally, I was able to get a mom-and-pop furniture store to locate there. I had to, as an incentive, I had to, for my own personal funds, I had to give $100,000 loan for them to buy the inventory to get it rented. And on top of that, I had to spend over $150,000 to do the repairs for that space because it had been neglected for four years. And so if Pease vacates, when Pease vacates rather, additional to the loss of rent... And so if Pease vacates, when Pease vacates rather, additional to the loss of rent, I'll have to pay the utility bill to heat 91,000 square feet in winter. And also, the whole plaza, the roof is about 30 years old, and most of the roof needs replaced, including the space. And in the presentation, I have included an estimate from the roofing company, KBR Roofing, just to replace the Pease Warehouse Roof is going to cost $234,000. So I am not able to make that kind of an investment unless it is occupied, or tenant, I have a tenant who is willing to sign at least a five-year lease and able to pay a reasonable rent. And so if this, when this becomes vacant, I should expect it to be, stay vacant for many, many years. If the 43,000 square foot face was vacant for four years, this will be vacant for five of 10 years, and then I'll have to do something to repurpose and change the use to something. So that's why I'm trying to be proactive and enterprising and foresee the problem, and come up with a plan to best use this space, so that the whole plaza will be stabilized. Also, if this is vacant, I have other secondary consequences of this. I was able to move Dollar Tree to one of the spaces last year, but in the Dollar Tree lease, it says if the plaza is less than 70% occupied, they will reduce their rent by 50%. So when Pease vacates, the Dollar Tree can say they'll be paying only half of the rent, because occupancy will be 46%. Also, all the other tenants will start renegotiating, ask for rent discounts when their leases up, because they see the vacancies. And then there's security concern also, which I experienced firsthand when the other space was vacant. When Pease Warehouse is vacant, 91,000 square feet, there'll be significant security concern also, because people dump, they use it as like the space in the back, the area in the back, as the public trash area. I have to spend $1,000 a month just to remove public trash. People come and dump it in the night, and I have to hire people just to empty this, and then there are other nefarious activities that can happen when it's, such a large area is vacant. And also on top of that, all this will be even mute, because if the, if I don't have a plan to, for the space, and with Pease vacating, my current loan, I bought it exactly five years ago, so it'll be five years' term by January next month, the bank can call the loan and say, they are not interested in refinancing this, because it's a 46, 46% occupied space with a 91,000 square foot vacancy, with no hope of finding a tenant. It will be extremely difficult to get lending, to finance it, so I'll be facing a situation where I may have to auction the space, or let it foreclose on it. So those are the reasons, that those are things that will happen if I, if I'm not able to get this approved, and if it goes vacant. Now, if I do get it, so the plan I have come up with is to turn it into a self, climate-controlled self-storage facility. And Mr. Jones, he's very well experienced, he has done over 15 facilities all over the country, and so he has, he mentioned he has already worked with the Planning Commission, Liz Hayden, to, and got the input of the city to how to best make this work. And so if, my hope is if we can get this approved, then I can present that to the bank and get the loan refinanced, and then I'll be investing my own money, more than a million dollars, to get this repurposed, to a self-storage facility. And that will stabilize the property, maintaining the security of the neighborhood, and I'll be, that will be a positive impact to lease out the remaining vacant spaces. And also, that will maintain the cash flow, so that I can make the necessary capital improvements to replace the roof, not only for the P space, for the remaining part of the center, as well as to maintain the parking lot, et cetera. But otherwise, if this is not approved, and if it stays vacant for years and years, I'll be bleeding cash, and I will not be able to invest on the capital improvements, the parking lot will get neglected, the roof will be, it's all, I will not be able to invest money on replacements, the whole, the plaza can go, can spiral down. So that is why it's so important, that's why we really appreciate you giving this opportunity for me to come in person and present this. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
I don't have any.
Mr. Mayor, this is Susan Vaughn.
Please.
I, so structurally, what would the Pease building look like if it were a storage unit? So if you're looking at the facility, what would it look like?
Essentially, it will look exactly like it does now, with the new sign and improvements that fascia. If you look at the rest of the mall, it's got a picture frame type design on all of the other storefronts. We would incorporate that into this, so that it would be blending with the rest of the mall. There's not a lot of traffic that comes to this as far as big storage vehicles. It's more the single-family person who rents it, and once they put their things in there, they typically leave them for years and years and years. So it's not a, a big problem with the trash and everything that goes on now, that the owner just mentioned having to clean up. But from the exterior, it will look exactly like the remaining portion of the mall. It's not what everybody's gotten used to, when they think mini storage, that it's rows and rows and rows of buildings with garage doors. It's not like that at all. This is very clean, very compatible with the shopping center as it sits right now.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Sir Feal State, Mr. Mayor, this is Tim Nepp.
Yes.
Tell me, if, if the proposal goes through, and I drove through the plaza, I drove through the front, I walked, I went around the back to the rear of the plaza, and then I drove the neighborhood that butts to, the area behind the railroad tracks, the neighborhoods to the east, west, and north and south, just to have an idea of exactly what this would be. If this proposal would go through, how much time, between the time it, as it is today, to the time it would be turnkey as a self-storage center, how much time is involved?
Typically, from the time that the current tenant vacates, it's somewhere between 30 and 45 days to assemble this. The pieces and parts that make up the individual storage units are pre-manufactured and shipped in, and so it's just a matter of installation. We're in a good situation here, in that the heating and cooling system's already in place, the electrical's already in place, and it's just a matter of what we're doing underneath that ceiling. That ceiling that's there now stays in place, so we actually can make this happen fairly quickly.
I see. Thank you. I also want to commend you, gentlemen, and all of your associates for the proposal, the presentation that was given to us for our review. Doctor, in what you presented to us this evening, in your plan for the building, it is a solid, in my opinion, a solid business plan for that community, and what the self-storage center may be, as far as bringing further tenants to that plaza. As you said, Doctor, it's quite vacated now. I also noticed the other tenants that remain, but also noticed those other tenants that have, that have quite recently vacated your property. So again, I commend you for the proposal that you made to our Planning Commission, for both of you joining us tonight, to be able to share what you're hopeful of in what council may do this evening. So again, gentlemen, thanks very much for being with us.
Any other questions from council members? Is there any question for city staff about this particular caucus agenda item?
If I may add one reason why I would like to, if I may add why I'm requesting this approval soon, or applying for it now, instead of waiting till Mr. Pease vacates, is for several reasons. One, if we do get the approval, it will take another few weeks, and we need to do the designing, and then I had to get bids from different contractors for the bid. So we are thinking about, it will take about five, six months for, to have the contractor chosen, ready to go. The loans approved for the construction, which I want to have, all be ready to go when Mr. Pease vacates. If I wait till Mr. Pease vacates and then start the process, it's going to delay the, the place will be vacant for about five, six months, and that's going to, I'm going to drain my cash just maintaining a property for six months. And then I may not financially be able to do the project even if it is approved, because I have been, I have to just sustain a vacant property with loss of rent, with, with utility bills. And on top of that, as I said before, the bank, if they call the loan, then it'd be a completely mute point. So that's why I would like, I have requested a, this application now, and to see if we can get it approved over the next few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Mayor Pullman here. I have a question for Liz. Sorry about that, Liz. Right now, it's, it's industrial zoning, right? And it would have to be changed to planned development zoning?
That's a good question. It does not need, doesn't need to be rezoned to, to use this, is self-storage. It, self-storage is a conditional use in the current zoning. But one of our goals, we, the, the planning department would like to rezone parts of Route 4 that are zoned industrial, that are clearly commercial, to a B zoning. So when they came in and applied for a conditional use for self-storage, we asked them if they would instead apply for a rezoning, so that we could get it zoned properly as part of this process. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but does, in, in other words, do you want, is it okay with them to rezone it to planning, you know, to the planned development zoning? Or is there a problem with doing that?
They agree, they agreed to change their application to rezoning it to business plan development.
Okay. And that's better for us anyway, to, to rezone it that way.
Our, our preference, yes. The, the planning department, hopefully at some point, will move forward with our own proposal to rezone parts of Route 4. This is, we want to see Route 4 be, be rezoned to a business zoning instead of industrial. So if this does not go through, we would likely come back with our own proposal at some point for a handful of blocks of Route 4.
So to clarify again, basically if we do a planned development zoning, that would be something they're going to agree with, that they'll do. And second of all, that's going to give us a little bit of say-so on what goes on around there, and without somebody just doing something to destroy the building, or, you know, the aesthetics of the building.
Yes.
Okay. That's where I was getting at. Thanks, Liz.
Any other questions for city staff, or for the applicant, or applicant representative? All right. Regarding the motion, if I understand this correct, the motion would be that council receives the report and concurs in the recommendation. And the recommendation is a denial by the Planning Commission. So if I'm not mistaken, a yes vote to that motion concurs with the denial. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
No, so let our law director answer that question.
Please do. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, so if, if you go to the report, there's actually two different proposed motions for council consideration. So if you want to deny it, there is a proposed motion on page three of the report for the denial, and if you want to approve it, on page four of the report is a proposed motion for that. Do you, do you see that, Mr. Mayor?
I am going to that right now. Okay.
This is a rezoning, doesn't need to go to vote on January 13th.
That's correct. So that's in, that's in the motion for the approval. If they go to approve it, you know, Liz is pointing out that it will come back for a first reading at next week's meeting, and then at the first meeting in January.
For either motion, right? It's going forward either way. We'll see it two more times.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I can pull up that motion on the screen. I'm just going to need to...
I've got it. I've got it in front of me right now. So I'm good. So there's a denial option and an approval option.
Well, Daniel, would you mind pulling it up so we can see it?
Sure. Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to turn off the screen sharing for a moment to pull up the document. Just one moment, please. Can you see that, Mr. Mayor?
I've, I've, I've got it on my phone right now. I'm looking at it right now. So I got it.
Everybody else? I'll zoom it in.
And after you've taken a look at it, would, if someone will make a, a motion on that.
They want the approval, denial.
Okay.
So can you, I'm sorry, this is Susan. If you can restate again what we are voting on, is it number one?
It's council's pleasure. So if you want the project to go forward and you want to approve it, then you would make the, the motion that's right now on the screen for, under the approval heading. If you want to deny the project and not have it rezoned, then you would make the motion that's under the denial header.
Oh.
The denial is on the, on the previous page.
Yeah, it's before that, right? Very good.
Correct.
If you want to deny it, we have to read that motion on number one, correct? And if we want to approve it, we have to read the next one on number, the, the other one as a motion.
So do we have to first agree if we want to approve it or deny it before we know what motion to read?
Should we?
If, if some, if someone has the pleasure to approve this project, you can make a motion right now to approve it and read the motion under the approval, and then council will vote, take a roll call vote on that. And then at the next council meeting, it's, it's not a legislative action, but legislative direction. And then at the next council meeting, you will have legislation that's going to reflect that wish.
Thanks, Latisha. Daniel, would you scroll to the next page?
Scroll to the approval. So where's the motion for that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is Councilman Tim Nepp.
Yes.
I would like to move that the city approves the rezoning request to change the zoning of properties at 1710 South Erie Boulevard, 1700 South, South Erie Boulevard, 1746 South Erie Boulevard, 1766 South Erie Boulevard, 1796 South Erie Boulevard, from I-2 Industrial to BPT, BPD, Planned Business Development Zoning District, with the conditions set forth in the caucus report, and directs the preparation of the necessary legislation for our next meeting.
I'll second.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Okay. I heard everybody on that. Councilmember Nepp made the motion, seconded by, I'm going to say Vice Mayor Eric Pullman.
Yes.
So there's... If you please read the public hearing. Pop it into the record, please.
A public hearing regarding appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Hamilton, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2021.
Okay. I believe we have a presentation. Is that correct, Assistant Manager?
That is correct, Mayor. I'm going to look this way so I can look at everyone at the same time. Appreciate the opportunity to present the proposed 2021 budget to city council and our citizens tonight. So with that, I thought we would start with our budget priorities for 2021. And they're very simple. Improve our neighborhoods, support our small businesses, and provide top-notch public services, spaces, and amenities. So why those three budget priorities? Safe, clean, and healthy neighborhoods, vibrant small businesses, and top-notch public services, spaces, and public spaces, meaning mostly parks and common areas in Hamilton, and amenities. Retain and attract the workforce and intellectual capital we need to grow our large business base. Why is growing the large business base important to us? Because a larger business provides job opportunities for our residents. They allow us to keep our utility rates stable. They provide income taxes to support our basic services. And the workforce will invest in our neighborhoods, improve our school performance, and support our small business. This creates the virtuous economic and social cycles that we desire. So larger businesses, I want to talk about that before we get into the actual nuts and bolts of the budget itself. When you look at the actual top 10 businesses in Hamilton in terms of employment, in 2019, which is the last data we had, you have Bethesda Butler TriHealth, which was not on there in 2010, but you have Fort Hamilton that was. But Fort Hamilton has grown in the last 10 years in terms of full-time unemployment. Bilstein was also on there in 2010, but they've added over 530 new jobs in the past decade. 80 Acres Farms is not on there yet, but they, as evidenced by the facilities that they've constructed in our Hamilton Enterprise Park, the adaptive reuse on South Second Street, and the office space that they have leased at 345 High Street. They are quickly a fast-growing company that's invested over $40 million of capital within the city just in the past three years. And they continue to attract a very well-educated workforce, including hiring individuals out of Dole Foods, Walmart, and these are C-suite type individuals that are now working every day in downtown Hamilton. And on the screen is the 70,000 square foot vertical farm that is almost complete in the Hamilton Enterprise Park. Salvigni, again, is not on that top 10 list, but they've invested over $10 million, closer to $15 million, in building this new showroom that is just on the east side of bypass four north of Sims Road. If you are familiar with where Valio is, adjacent to Valio. But we are very fortunate to have many companies like Influx, again, not on the top 10 list, but employ almost 150 individuals, many of them plastic engineers, doing incredible work for Procter and Gamble across the entire globe. And again, Spooky Nook is not on that top 10 list yet. I have a feeling in two or three years from now, they will be on that list. And as you can see on the slide in this photo, this aerial that was taken is probably almost four months old now. A lot of that steel is being enclosed that is in the forefront of the slide. And we had our weekly conference call with Spooky Nook today at 1:00. And they are quickly filling up a lot of the retail and restaurant space they have inside. So it's, they're going to have a, a pretty solid lineup the day they open. Mr. Byler is in town again this week. He'll be in town again next week. Matter of fact, I'm doing another tour at 10:00 AM next Wednesday. If anyone's interested, it lasts about an hour. But they've poured concrete in the hotel and convention space. They've polished the concrete. They're going to start framing in the hotel rooms. It's, it's really going to start getting exciting in the next couple of months. So if anyone's interested, next Wednesday at 10, 10:00 AM, going to do a tour. Then also, many of you attended the SECA groundbreaking. SECA is another one that's very exciting, not on the top 10 list, but will be hiring 70 new employees here in the coming months, investing tens of millions of dollars of new capital. And this is their initial foray into North America for their corrugated boxing company. So on the screen, you will see in 2010, the top 10 employers that were in Hamilton juxtaposed to the 2019 top 10 employers. If you just add the top 10 alone, you will see that we have approximately 1,200 more jobs in the top 10 last year that we did in 2010. Not on the list, but are very fast-growing companies. Salvigni, 80 Acres, Influx, SECA, Valio, Synergy, Kirsch CPA, ODW Logistics, United Performance Metals, Connector Manufacturing, and there's many, many more. We simply just ran out of space. I was chatting with the Economic Development Department earlier this morning, and just in a, in a five-minute conversation, we identified nine foreign countries that have substantial business operations in Hamilton, Ohio. So it's just exciting to see that list. It's exciting to see what that list is going to look like in a few years. I think what was really interesting to me was if you look at number six, nine, and 10 on our list, they were not even on the 2010 list. So Dorana Hybrid, Bethesda Butler, Miami University were not even on the list. Conversely, we had some that were on the 2010 list that are no longer there. Meyer, Kroger fell off, First Financial Bank fell off. So it's something that obviously we need to be aware of and, and understand as we keep trying to grow our job base. So we talked about why we felt small businesses and neighborhoods and exceptional public services and spaces were important. So how do we actually achieve that? And, and the budget that's being presented for 2021, there's a heavy emphasis on public safety equipment and improvements. You will see that we're replacing a Quint at a cost of 3/4 million dollars, that we're buying two new fire engines at almost a half a million dollars each. We're buying $350,000 in new police cruisers, Fire Station 25 Rehab, another $300,000, a new Life Squad, police body cameras. In this day and age, I think it's becoming more and more important. So the cameras and tasers, you'll see that we have $150,000 budgeted for that. We have $50,000 in police headquarter repairs, and also some minor rehabilitation at Station 21 for our fire department at $40,000. There's also smaller things that we're doing. We're performing a comprehensive blight audit where every property in Hamilton is going to be categorized so we can get ahead with better information and, and understand where we need to be focusing more resources. We're enhancing our code enforcement efforts to the tune of 171,000, mostly through the work of the Department of Resident Services. We're creating and enforcing at-risk property registrations through ProChamps. We're doubling our demolition budget, and we're also purchasing additional equipment for the Quick Strike Team. I sent an email to city council, I think in the last couple of weeks, about the Quick Strike Team and the activities they're working on. It's literally everything from abating homeless camps in the city to illegal dumping. They've collected thousands and thousands of illegally dumped tires, but we're trying to give them the tools that they can attack these more quickly so when neighborhoods or residents call us, or a business calls us and says, hey, someone's established a homeless camp behind us, someone's illegally dumped behind us, we can help those neighborhoods and those businesses in a quicker, more efficient fashion. Also, there's a proactive investment of over $27 million in utility and roadway upgrades and improvements. And I just want to be clear that this does not include the additional three-plus million dollars we'll be spending in 2021 in additional streets through the street levy funds, and we'll get to those in a moment. You can see that $17 million in the Hamilton Enterprise Park alone to increase electric and water service and reliability. I'm going to have Nathan Perry come up in, in about 10 slides from now and walk council through the presentation he made to the finance committee, which we'll get to that in more detail. Seven and a half million dollars in modernizing, improving our utility plants, and almost $9 million in replacement of distribution and collection system infrastructure. Everything from electric, replacing electric poles to sewers to mains. And finally, there's many small actions. So we talked about big purchases for police and fire. We talked about how we're going to better equip the Quick Strike Team and the Department of Resident Services, but also smaller things that our small businesses are relying on, on how we can help generate foot traffic into downtown Main Street, into the other business districts in Hamilton. We're going, we're going to expand the Hamilton's Craft and Cocktail Quest program. We're going to launch Operation Takeout to support our restaurants. If you've noticed, I think a couple of our restaurants have announced more reduced hours just here in the last week or so. And as we get into what our health director talked about, some skyrocketing numbers, we just want to get ahead of the curve, so to speak, so we can help our restaurants stay profitable. We're going to work directly with our small businesses to enhance their digital footprint and e-commerce capabilities. That's in partnership with the Hamilton Area Chamber of Commerce. Evaluate other takeout and curbside parking opportunities. Obviously, we've done some things already in 2020 with their rapid restart team. That team remains in place as they look to get us through the second wave of potential closures and limited hours. And finally, we're going to expand outdoor dining locations, and this is something that we're not just doing during the downturn. This is something that we are looking to do on a go-forward basis. So the actual nuts and bolts of the 2021 budget. The proposed budget is not structurally balanced. This is the 11th budget I've presented since I've been city manager. This is only the third out of the 11 budgets that has not been structurally balanced. And essentially what that means is we are, we have fund balance to cover about 1.6 million that's budgeted that we don't believe we're going to necessarily see in revenues. You'll see in some coming slides, I think we're being very conservative. I honestly don't think we're going to see a $1.6 million deficit, but with the unknown right now, with the pandemic, we, again, have been hyper-conservative on, on this. So the 2021 income tax revenue is budgeted down at 21.6 million. So the budget we approved for last year was at 20 million. And I think the other sort of takeaway from the general fund is the public safety percent of the overall general fund budget continues to increase. So for the 2021 budget, it is at 70 and 1/2 percent. At one point, I think it was closer maybe to 62 percent when I first started, but it's more and more the general fund budget is consumed with public safety. And to be very clear, public safety is police and fire, but it's also courts and 911 dispatch, which we have contracted through the Butler County Sheriff's Department. So reimbursements from other funds to the general fund are down $352,000. This includes a $346,000 reduction to the four utility funds, and as a result of decreased budgets in various departments throughout the general fund that are partially reimbursed through inter-fund chargebacks. Last bullet point, planning, civil service, and finance combined are down almost a half a million dollars compared to the 2020 budget. So this slide is mildly confusing. Let me just walk you through this for a moment. So if you take a look at the 2019 column, that is what we actually brought in in income tax on a month-by-month basis. So those are actual amounts. In 2020, January through October are actual amounts. But we had to project for November and for December. We don't have November closed yet, and obviously, we're just beginning the month of December. So based on conversations with our income tax collection agency, that is our best guess. So you can see that in 2019, we collected almost $22.8 million in income tax. We believe that when 2020 is closed, we'll have collected about $22.3 million in income tax. The, the good news is the budget that council approved in 2020 was $22 million in income tax. We actually believe we're going to come over budget in income tax collections, which going through a pandemic is almost crazy to think that we've been able to stay that strong, but I think that's a testament to working with the business community, the health department, working with our larger businesses to keep them open as, as long as possible. But I've talked to many cities, and this is simply just not the case, but we've been very fortunate, and I truly believe at the end of this year, we're going to come out more than what we budgeted in 2020. So when I say that we only budgeted 21.6 million, I truly believe it's going to come in higher than that for 2021, but just trying to be very conservative, we have shown that down and show, show the budget eating into our fund balance. Next slide, please. So if you look at the general fund highlights in terms of revenue, the income tax, which includes the joint economic development districts that are primarily located in the Bridgewater Falls area, is almost 47 or a little bit over 47 percent of our general fund revenue. We have reimbursements for other funds, which is the next large piece of that. I believe we've talked about this in prior years, budget public hearings, but our income tax collection as a percent is much lower than a lot of other cities. Cincinnati is an example, I want to say, is at 65 to 70 percent. Fairfield, I believe, is much higher than this. So from an income tax perspective, it is something that we're constantly working on. So back to the question, why? Why do we focus on neighborhoods? Why do we focus on small businesses? And why do we focus on great public services? We have to keep growing our job base because our job base is what pays the bills in terms of providing the basic services. So again, we talked about public safety being almost 70 and 1/2 percent, 70.5 percent of the general fund budget. You can see the, the breakdown. General government is about 11 percent, almost 12 percent of the general fund budget. And you can see public health, public works, and others are relatively small percentages of that. So again, the importance, everyone wants strong public safety, and the best way to provide strong public safety is to keep growing the job base, which I think we've done a very good job at in the last decade, and we just need to keep doing a good job going into the future. So the next couple of slides are showing you a, I just listed the ones that are showing a 5 percent change, up or down, over the prior year, just to give you an idea. So you can see on this slide here that the clerk's office, the manager's office, the planning department, and civil service are all budgeted down from what was budgeted last year. Going up is neighborhoods, city council. City council about 9 percent, neighborhoods at 40 percent. The neighborhoods budget, Mr. Finance Director, I'm going to say, just due to positions?
Yeah, there was a position allocated at the city manager budget to switch to the neighborhood.
Right. Next slide. And you can see again, finance, health department, and transfers are down. Just to make a point about the health department being down in the middle of a pandemic, that is simply because we shifted workers that used to report to the health department from a, a sanitarian or code compliance perspective. Those are now located in the Department of Resident Services, so that is why you're seeing a decrease in that budget. It's just, it's more of just shifting workers from one department to a different department. Public works, you'll see, has a, a 10 percent increase. Again, that's a focus in, on providing the infrastructure and also doing the things in our neighborhoods that we believe is important to support the neighborhoods. Next slide. So if you go back to the approved budget in 2016 versus the proposed budget in 2021, we have increased the police and- into the future. So the next couple of slides are showing you, I just listed the ones that are showing a 5% change, up or down, over the prior year, just to give you an idea. So you can see on this slide here that the clerk's office, the manager's office, the planning department, and civil service are all budgeted down from what was budgeted last year. Going up is neighborhoods, city council. City council about 9%, neighborhoods at 40%. The neighborhoods budget, Mr. Finance Director, I'm going to say, just due to positions.
Yeah, there was a position allocated in the city manager budget to switch to the neighborhood.
Right. Next slide. And you can see, again, finance, Health Department, and transfers are down. Just to make a point about the Health Department being down in the middle of a pandemic, that is simply because we shifted workers that used to report to the Health Department from a sanitarian or code compliance perspective. Those are now located in the Department of Resident Services, so that is why you're seeing a decrease in that budget. It's more of just shifting workers from one department to a different department. Public Works, you'll see, has a 10% increase. Again, that's a focus in on providing the infrastructure and also doing the things in our neighborhoods that we believe is important to support the neighborhoods. Next slide. So if you go back to the approved budget in 2016 versus the proposed budget in 2021, we've increased the police and fire budgets by almost $5.6 million in that timeframe. If you recall, early in 2010, when our budgets were, 2010, probably '11 and '12, when our budgets were not doing well at all, we were trying to get on better financial footing, we decreased those budgets, but this is our effort to build those budgets back up in the past five years or so. So when you look at our general fund, it's really, when you see increases, the increase really is heavily shifted towards the public safety side. So this year, it's hard to believe, but we're going to end this year with our largest unencumbered general fund balance. And this number does not include the Budget Stabilization Fund that you'll see on the next slide. So at the end of this year, we're projecting that we're going to be just a little bit under 10.4 million in unrestricted funds in the general fund. So you can see the arrow that carries that up. So the last day of 2020 is the first day then of 2021. So as I told you, the budget is not structurally balanced, so what we're showing is eating into that fund balance to get us through 2021, which would put us at a projected unencumbered balance of about $8.75 million at the end of 2021. But if you look at the Budget Stabilization Fund, when you layer that on top of the unrestricted balance in the general fund, that still leaves us at about $10.7 million. So with the Budget Stabilization Fund at the end of this year, we're going to have a little over $12.3 million in the general fund. So if you go back to 2008, '09, and '10, you can see that we've made pretty significant progress in those years. And the thing that I think I'm the most proud of, city council, the city staff, that's worked so hard, if you look at the accomplishments, the physical improvements to the community in the last decade, while also building up the fund balance at the same time, that's a very tricky thing to pull off. And to be able to say that, based on all the purchases we've made, with all the improvements that we've made, that we've been able to not only increase the unrestricted fund balance while doing these other things at the same time, it's really a testament to growing that job base, which has provided the necessary revenue to get us to that point. A lot of these things we've talked about already in terms of police capital. Again, you'll see that there is a lot of focus on what we call the public spaces, so mostly parks and common spaces like trails or like the public spaces in front of the city building or the large green spaces that you may see that technically are not parks, but the Main Street ramp area, if you will, that have some sculptures and some other things. Just keeping those clean, tidy, it's important to the overall image of the community. So you'll see that in addition to the public safety, there's a lot of emphasis also on the public parks and the public spaces of the community. Again, we walked through all these fire department improvements already. So in a few slides, I'm going to have Nathan Perry come up and walk us into a little bit more detail on some of the infrastructure side of things. The big difference between '20 and '21 really is we accounted for the new gateway substation that's being constructed at Hamilton Enterprise Park in 2020's budget, which is why it looks like we spent more money. We still have almost $27 million in infrastructure improvements planned for 2021, and the gateway sub is not completed yet, but that's something that will also be completed during 2021. But before I pass the presentation off to Mr. Perry, I did want to make sure that we talked about the streets levy within the framework of this budget presentation. So the 17 neighborhoods of Hamilton, the seven that are embold on the screen are neighborhoods that are actually seeing their first round of street improvements based on the street levy. So Armendale, Enterprise Park, Highland Park, Lindenwald, New London, Riverview, and Washington all have streets from the streets levy funding that are on that list for next year. So the feedback that we solicited during 2020 on streets, I'm happy to say that of the top 10 that our residents submitted to us, five of the top 10 have either been completed or they're scheduled in the next 18 months or so. So Grand Boulevard was completed, Eaton Avenue was completed. We have Summit Cleveland Avenue, which will be completed in 2021. Corwin Avenue will be done. We'll time that with a new sanitary sewer project that council is well aware of on Corwin Avenue. Tyler'sville Road is scheduled for 2021. Sanders Drive scheduled for 2021. So we, sticking to our word, we're really taking the feedback received and doing our best to align that. Obviously, there's infrastructure implications and other implications as we focus on the streets that our residents said they wanted done the most, but I think we're off to a pretty good start. In addition to the street levy funds, we also have the typical funding that we do. So you'll see A through G on the screen. Elmont from Hunt to Western, Madison from St. Clair to the Clinton Alley, Monument from Herm to Neyland, the entire section of Herm, Stevens, again, the entire section, Highland from Armo to Eaton, and then down in Lindenwald area, you have Allen, Noize, Hayes, Bro, and Chase that are from Benninghoffen to Madison. And we already talked about Tyler'sville Road. Since there is a formula that we talked about during the street levy process, Tyler'sville exceeded that amount, so we're putting the maximum amount that we said that we would in an area based on the street levy, and then we're using other funding to cover the difference. So Tyler'sville Road from bypass four to Hamilton Enterprise Park driver, just slightly past it, is a very large project. It's almost $3 million. And again, that's one that our residents had rated, I think, number two or three. And also, it's important as we continue to grow the investment, we've seen just between SECA and 80 Acres, the investment that we're going to see in Enterprise Park is pushing $100 million just on those two recently announced projects. So that section in Tyler'sville is important. We talked about the new substation and the potential water tower. These are the last two slides before I turn it back or turn it over to Mr. Perry, but I just want to give you a visual of where the new substation is currently under construction and where we want to build a potential new water tower. Next slide, please. And this is the service territory for each. So if you look at the water tower service area, it's a little bit smaller than what the substation will do in terms of electric. So everything that's dotted in yellow, it's just general, if you will, but that's the area that the new substation will help serve. The water tower is really focused on our industrial growth and making sure that we're providing appropriate flows to all the new construction that we're seeing at Hamilton Enterprise Park. With that, I will be back to finish the presentation, but for the middle part of that, I'm going to ask Mr. Perry to come up and get into some more detail on the infrastructure side.
Good evening. I'm going to start with some of the top projects our engineering and operations team will be working on in 2020. And really, these are proactive investments to continue to provide safe and reliable services to our businesses and residents. So starting with greenup, we're investing $4.3 million in greenup. In 2016, when we became partners in this project with AMP, we began on a 10-year capital improvement plan to increase the efficiency of the plant and to modernize that plant. And so this is year five of that capital improvement plan, and the investments that you see here will continue to modernize this plan. Also, $4.3 million is the total, but the other 40-plus communities through AMP will be sharing in approximately half of that expense. The next project is Gilmore Pond Sanitary Sewer Replacement. So this sanitary sewer currently goes through the swampy area through here. We're going to relocate that to route with the bike path. And right now, it's a maintenance issue for us. We're getting inflow and infiltration into that sewer, so we're getting more water into that sewer that we have to then collect and treat. So this will take it out of that area and improve performance and maintenance of that sewer. Also, I don't have this on the slide, but there's an additional $600,000 that'll reroute the gas line. It's an aging gas main that heads through there, too. We're going to reroute that along the same path. In 2021, we'll be designing and replacing the Corwin Avenue sanitary sewer. This will help improve the quality of that service to residents in that neighborhood. This is the Heathwood subdivision that you see here on the map, and currently, we have a package treatment plant. So it's an onsite treatment plant that's collecting the sewer flow in that neighborhood and treating it onsite. That is, you know, at the end of its useful life or nearing the end of its useful life. We, engineering, is taking a look at this project, and they're proposing that we install two lift stations. So one at where the star is, where the current, the red star, the current package treatment plant is, and another lift station at the yellow star. Then the orange line is a force main, so we're going to pump that sewer to our collection system, and it'll flow to our water reclamation facility. And really, we're eliminating that package treatment plant because the EPA continues to put more stringent requirements around monitoring and maintaining those package treatment plants. So it eliminates a risk for us, and it's also a lower operating cost for us over the long term to install these facilities. So Sanders and Leo, we talked about the Sanders, we'll be repaving that, but before we go into that, we'll be replacing the water main in this area, and we're going to upsize the water main to provide better flow and fire protection to the residents in that community. And then we'll be coming through and repaving those streets. But one thing to note, engineering got a $1 million grant for this project, so $500,000 of that will reduce the water costs, and $500,000 of that will reduce the street paving We, in 2016, 2017, we did a citywide pole assessment, so we looked at all of our poles. We have 24,000 of them and did a condition assessment of those. And since then, we've been proactively replacing poles that are in need of replacement, so we're spending $1 million to continue that program. And that includes the pole itself, the labor, the transformers, and any tree trimming we need to do to get access to that pole. So we're investing $700,000 at the water plant next year. What I don't have on here is we're also investing almost $900,000 at the, this is the water reclamation facility. We're investing $900,000 at the water plant, and the projects at both of those plants are, we're replacing aging pumps. We're, in the case of the water plant, we're getting ready and preparing for the future when we increase capacity from Butler County. So both of these are plan improvements that are needed to continue to provide good service for treatment and production. This is the storm sewer on C and D above the sports complex. It's an old sewer, storm sewer. We're going to increase the capacity of that, which will help, you know, hopefully eliminate the possibility of a storm flow into the sports complex, and that'll be completed next year. The next two slides, you know, Joshua hit on these. These are the street resurfacing program, but I just wanted to give you an idea of the location of those projects. This one is the Tyler'sville project. So, you know, we've talked about this a lot. We're starting this year. We've been designing the centralized traffic signal system. It's a $5.2 million project. We received a $4.2 million grant for that. So engineering is working on the design. This year, we'll begin construction in late 2021, and we believe it'll be about a two-year implementation process to upgrade all of our signals and provide better and more safe traffic flow throughout our community. So we're constantly looking at our utility bills and the value that we bring. So all of these projects, you know, that are, our utility bills are supporting us making these investments. Next year, we're seeing an increase of $2.33, and most of that is a one-time increase in our refuse rate. Last year, we signed a five-year contract with Rumpke. We didn't increase the rate last year. We're going to increase it one time this year, and it'll remain level for the next three years, and that's going to largely go to increased refuse and recycling cost, as well as supporting the Quick Strike Team and other improvements that that fund supports. So the next two slides are really around our projections of revenue going into 2021. We've been monitoring the impacts of COVID, reduced sales on all of our utilities. And so I wanted to give you a brief update on collections. Our accounts receivable through September of this year are actually less than the same time period last year. And I think that the good news there is we received a significant amount of CARES Act money that we were able to provide to our residents to help with past two bills during that time when we weren't disconnecting. And also, our partnership with SELF and other state funds that have been able to help our customers, I think, have been great. And also, our customer service team has really worked hard to work with our customers, provide pay arrangements to get them into a positive status with us. So that team's really worked hard with our customers to support them during this time. But during COVID-19, as we were monitoring this, we, infrastructure delayed approximately $8.5 million of operating capital expenses, and we've continued to monitor that to protect our cash balance through this time. And we've released some of those projects, and some of them we've pushed into the 2021 budget that you are, you know, looking at today. And then the last part that I wanted to note here is our sales. So our natural gas usage has been down, but really, the majority of that decrease is just, it was a mild year. We didn't have a very harsh winter. It was pretty tame earlier in this year. Electric usage is only one that we've really seen down due to COVID, so we specifically are seeing to decrease commercial usage, but that was during that summer months. Right now, we monitor our load pretty much daily, and we've really seen an increase in that load, so it's really a 1.7% down from our projection for the year, which I think is, you know, very positive considering what we saw for a big part of this year. Our water usage is up, and that's largely due to increased flow from Butler County. They have a large service territory that we're providing water to, so that's very positive. And we haven't really seen a large decrease in our wastewater flows this year. So this just kind of graphically shows the percent change in our consumption over the last few years. And what we're budgeting for 2021 is based off of a normal weather year. So we look at these sales projections, and then that determines how much revenue we're going to budget for the year. So that's why we're taking a look at this. But if you go into the next slide here, our revenues are based off of those really conservative usage as we continue to monitor the impact of COVID-19, and most of our revenue in the infrastructure funds are coming from our four utilities. Okay, so finally, this is showing the 2020 budget for each of the infrastructure funds compared to the 2021 budget. I really want to highlight four of the funds that are changing the most. Stormwater, you see, has a approximately $170,000 increase, and the majority of that is going to cleaning and inspections of storm sewer ahead of the street levy. So we want to inspect the roads that we're going to be improving through the street levy, make sure that that storm sewer infrastructure is adequate, it's good, whether we have to replace that as well as the road. So we're getting ahead of that going into 2021. Natural gas, you see, a large decrease. Over the last two years, we've decreased our allocation to the AMP Fremont Energy Center electric project. electric project, and so we buy our gas, our share of the gas for that project, and as, as we've increased our entitlement of the electric output, we're decreasing the amount of gas that we're purchasing for the plant. And so, and that's really been just a pass-through cost, we, we participate in a, a prepaid program where we're able to get a 30 cent discount on every decimeter of gas, and so it's not really having a large budget impact to us, it's just a decreased volume. And finally, I want to point out the water system, you'll see a $450,000 increase there, and that is the majority due to increased cost of our chemicals and utilities used to treat our water system. So we've, we've just seen a year-over-year increase in the cost of those chemicals, and we're reflecting that in our budget this year. Thank you.
So in summary, I just wanted to show you a couple things that we typically get questions about. The first one is, how many full-time equivalents do we have budgeted for 2020 versus what we're proposing for 2021? You can see that it is decreasing by one. When you do not equate for the part-time or the seasonal, we actually have 593 full-time people that are in the budget for 2021. Again, that's down pretty substantially from 2010, when we were over 700 just in current full-time positions only, so quite a bit in the last decade. We do have some new positions that we did footnote on the bottom of that slide, so we have a, a natural gas leak surveyor, the primary duties there are performing the safety compliance required for leak survey of the gas system, and also prepare and submit the regulatory reports. And you'll see succession planning, so we have a position that's leaving, that this position will take over for, we will not hire another one. We have an associate civil engineer position, mostly due to the street levy, and that is to help, again, it's not being paid with street levy funding, I want to be clear on that, but this position is to oversee the design, engineering, quality control inspection for the street paving and improvements. Since we're going to be ramping up the amount of street paving, this is the person that's physically onsite while the paving's taking place to make sure it meets our standards and is done in a good way, so we don't have, we don't spend money for a bad street. We have an application support specialist. We are really down in the IT department in terms of full-time employees, we're down actually more than 10 in the last decade. This is a, a lower to mid-level position that's just going to help get the work done in a more efficient manner. We also have an electric inspector, this will only be a new position for training purposes as our current electric inspector is expected to retire in 2021. So we'll carry both of those positions for a short period while the person's in training, then that person will fall off. So in the budget comparison between the two, we have decreased the tax revenue by 400,000 or a little under 2% from the 2020 adopted budget. We're budgeting 2,000, 200,000 in this coming year versus 100,000 for blight remediation and nuisance demolitions, we talked about that in the very beginning of the presentation. We also talked about how the chargebacks to utilities are down almost $350,000, and at this point, the 2021 grand total proposed budget expenditures are coming in a little bit under 48.7 million versus what was adopted in 2020 at 47.86 million. And the increase there, I think the public safety budget numbers are up over 900,000, so if you took those out, we'd actually have a decreasing general fund budget for next year. So with that, the takeaways from the presentation, this is certainly a conservative budget in revenues and expenses, just due to the uncertainty surrounding COVID-19, while remaining focused on neighborhoods, small businesses, and maintaining the public services and spaces. The 2021 budgeted FTEs are less than what was budgeted in 2020, our utility rates are stable, and finally, the general fund expenses that are budgeted for 2021 are very similar to what was actually expended in 2008. So again, I think, I want to give Council huge commendation for keeping the budget below where we were at 13 years ago, and when you see the federal government spending, you see the state government spending, you see levels of government that are spending huge amounts of money, the fact that we are still spending less, I think it's, I think this budget is still $200,000 less than what we actually expended in 2008, is a, is a very, very strong testament to your fiscal discipline. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions or comments from Council? I just want to say thank you for focusing on those three budget priorities, I think all of Council appreciates that. Regarding the infrastructure, I see a lot of good planning, a lot of preventative type of steps being taken, and less crisis management, hopefully, which is what we've seen over the years, is less crisis management because we're doing things the right way with planning, so I, I thank you folks and the entire city team for that.
Mr. Mayor.
Any comments from Council?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, it's Carla Fear.
Please.
I just want to thank you for working with the blight and neighborhoods, getting into that, I think that that is just, it's something we've talked about for years, and I think it's going to be huge in helping the city, so I'm glad we're focusing on that.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, this is Tim Knapp.
Please.
Joshua, as I have shared with you for the 11 years now in service, we, we complimented the city and said, we're going to run this, this city as a business, and we've accomplished those goals fiscally, we've accomplished those goals in spite of some of the challenges that have been presented. During your presentation, you talked about the comments from other city managers, other cities in the Midwest that have come to us and said, what are you doing so well that, that we might be able to copy and, and appreciate some of the things that we in Hamilton are enjoying right now? Again, the mayor mentioned being fiscally conservative, and we're doing those things on purpose, and yet, the, the departments that work with you and, and the directors that, that bring you their proposals for our budget for, for this year that we're currently in, and for towards next year and what their proposals are, we're maintaining those promises that we talk to the new, the new employers that are in Hamilton, and what we're presenting to them in our package and why they're here today. As you mentioned, countries from all over the world are coming to Hamilton and, and employing people here that we're able to budget for that and able to budget for the growth. The opportunity that Spooky Nook will bring, along with all the other businesses that you mentioned in your presentation this evening, is just an incredible testimony to the work. We talked 10 years ago about breaking down some of the silos that used to be the way the, the city management team ran this, this business, and those silos are gone now. The departments are working collaboratively, they're working with the business leaders in the community, the Chamber of Commerce, just as a wow organization to what the small business community is doing, to what the, the larger businesses, Fort Hamilton Hospital, the city schools, the, the people that use our utilities. And Nathan, your presentation tonight was spot-on in what we're doing to be able to grow those and be able to protect our services to our community, whether it's businesses and/or our residents, and every, all the slides that were shared tonight, for everybody to be able to appreciate and understand what we're doing here in the city on purpose, just brings more, again, commendation to everything that's being accomplished. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any kind of comments at this time? This is a public hearing, Mr. City Clerk, is there anybody who either signed the book or is out in the hallway wishing to speak at this public hearing?
No.
Mr. Mayor, nobody has signed the sheet, and, and nobody is in the lobby at this time.
Okay, so if there's no public comment, is anyone on Council, who else, who else to make a statement or make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Pullman.
Say it.
Want to make a motion that the public hearing be closed?
Second.
Motion, Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. The public hearing is closed at 7:41. And I'll set the motion that we come out of the public hearing and, and adjourn the regular meeting.
Still moved.
Whoa, before, Mr. Mayor, we still have new legislation that needs to be read into the record, sir.
I, what's that, please?
So you have a motion that...
Oh, okay.
Just to make sure that we're clear, we can have, we have already closed the public hearing, but we still have council actions pertaining to legislative items, sir.
I wasn't adjourn the meeting, I was coming out of the, okay, all right, that's fine. Okay, I realize that we have council actions pertaining to legislative items, but I thought we're going to come out of the public hearing to the regular meeting, but that's okay. I'll set the motion then, that is in our agenda right now regarding, a note be made upon the minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Fear.
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of Council was furnished a print and a copy of each item of legislation prior to it being considered at this meeting.
Second, Vaughn.
Motion, Councilmember Fear, second by Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We now go to new legislation, agenda item number five, which is the first reading of emergency ordinance regarding medical and hospitalization insurance.
An emergency ordinance amending section 181.24 of chapter 181 of the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio regarding medical and hospitalization insurance, first reading.
Okay, that's the first reading. Item number six, first reading of emergency ordinance involving the Improvement Corporation and a grant.
An emergency ordinance affirming the designation of the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Ohio, as the city's agency whose mission is to advance, encourage, and promote the industrial, economic, commercial, and civic development of the community, and authorize a grant or grants an aggregate amount of not to exceed $500,000 to be made to the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Ohio, for public purposes and declaring an emergency.
Okay, go to agenda item number seven, first reading of emergency ordinance involving real property located at 227 North B Street.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement and related actions related to the certain real property located at 227 North B Street, Hamilton, Ohio, 45013 Pucksters Properties LLC, first reading.
Okay, is that eight, the, written the wrong way at this point in time?
Uh, it is, but I can read it correctly to the record, sir.
Why don't you go ahead and do that, if you would, please?
An ordinance making appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Hamilton, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2021, first reading.
Okay, so first reading of emergency ordinance involving our 2021 budget. Okay, we go to agenda item number nine, which is first reading of an ordinance involving conditional use in automotive repair business, as well as also two variances.
See, an ordinance approving a request for a conditional use certificate to operate a automotive repair business at 1517 Dixie Highway, and two variances to setback landscaping and parking of vehicles property zoned I-2 Industrial Zoning District situated in the 6th Ward, City of Hamilton, Ohio, first reading.
Okay, go to agenda item 10, which is first reading of emergency ordinance involving our Small Business Relief Careers Grant Program.
See, swing with it, please, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a motion?
Uh, yeah, I, for some reason, it's not in my agenda, sir, I need to find it, one moment, please. County regarding Small Business Relief Careers Grant Program, two readings.
Mr. Mayor, Pullman, make a motion that the rules be suspended and set ordinance be read a second time by his title.
Second.
Lose the mayor.
Mayor Moeller, can you hear us? Mayor Moeller?
We have a motion and a second from Mr. Pullman and Mr. Brown for a set ordinance. Did you hear it by chance through the audio?
We want Bird to take over now.
Mayor Moeller, we cannot hear you, sir.
Can we get him on the phone?
He may have to call right back in, he might have got disconnected.
Uh, Mayor, you may have to disconnect and reconnect.
Hey, Pat, can you hear us? Okay, hold on one second. Let me put you on speaker. Okay, he can hear everything, but for some reason, we can't hear him, so he said to go ahead and let Vice Mayor...
Well, if you can hear me at all right now in the room?
It's the mic.
Uh, yes, we can.
Okay, then, all right, so we've got a motion and a second on the 10, so let's do a roll call vote on that motion, first part, number 10.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Knapp?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Moeller?
Yes. Okay, second reading of emergency ordinance, please.
Emergency ordinance appro, uh, excuse me. An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Butler County regarding a Small Business Relief Careers Grant Program, second reading.
He's on this line.
Mr. Mayor, make a ordinance that the, make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
There you go.
Okay, motion of Vice Mayor Pullman, who's second in that?
Brown.
Okay, second by Councilmember Brown. Any discussion or comment? I'd like to the city manager, if he could, even though this is kind of awkward, explain for the folks who are watching TV Hamilton about what this Small Business Relief Careers Grant Program is. Do you have any idea?
He's back.
I'm hanging up, Pat.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, regarding your question on the, the program itself, these are funds that were received by Butler County, we took a look at what the City of Fairfield did in terms of their applications, so ours is, is modeled somewhat loosely, or very similar to what they did. Already received several phone calls from some of our small businesses, actually went out and met with Ron, the barber, yesterday on Eaton Avenue, helped him complete his application, but the deadline is December 4th, so it's this week. If any small business has not received the application yet, email myself, email someone at City Hall, it's a very simple application to fill out, it does require a W-9 attachment, and Mr. Jones, correct me if I'm wrong, but it also requires a, something from the finance department, has like a vendor form, if you will.
Yeah, it was a vendor form with W-9, and it's on the front page of the city's website, all the information, just click, and it takes you right to it.
Thank you, so you can email us if you have access to the city website, which is Again, it's a very small or short application, requires a vendor application form, a W-9, again, very simple to fill out, literally less than five minutes, and some attachments relative to why you're asking for the reimbursement. It cannot be due to lost revenue, but it can be, it can be used to help cover like a utility bill, as an example, from March to November. I believe that 100,000's already been approved, so please, if there's any questions, go to
Quick question. That $100,000 has been approved already, that's about half the amount, is that correct? I mean, how much do we have from the county, and what's the usual amount that they are awarded? Did you say that, did I read that? I think I read that.
The maximum amount that we awarded, I believe, is $10,000.
The maximum amount's $10,000.
Right. Might have the finance director, but the maximum amount is $10,000, but he's probably a little bit more familiar with the program than I am.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor. So the maximum amount's $10,000. We were allocated $286,000 applications. Aaron's been going through them, Stath's been going through them. There are quite a few in, I think, actually, the last I looked, we're probably closer to $150,000. So yeah, please get, please get your application in, like Joshua said, the deadline is December 4th.
It's December 4th?
Yes, Friday, December 4th.
Wow. Okay. All right. Any other comment or questions by counsel regarding number 10?
No.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Brown?
Brown, yes.
Moeller?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, 7-0.
Okay, we go to agenda item number 11, I believe. And that is a resolution involving taxes assessed and collected.
A resolution requesting that the Butler County Order advance to the treasurer of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, taxes assessed and collected for and on behalf of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, 2020 through 2021.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Nab, I make a motion, the resolution be adopted?
Second, this is Ryan.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Nab, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Any discussion or comments about this resolution? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Moeller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted.
Okay, we now go to audience of city manager. Anything you wish to tell us at this point in time?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few very short comments. I was thinking about this quite a bit the past weekend while we worked on the budget presentation for tonight. And I just want to say, even though 2020 has been a very uncertain, crazy year, very proud of the city staff that has, I think, performed admirably during very strenuous and difficult conditions. The fact that we've been able to keep our fund balances high, certainly, a large part the federal government helped with the CARES Act money, but keep delivering solid services and being incredibly proactive with our small businesses is something that I've come to love about Hamilton, that as a community, we are very, very resilient. Thank counsel for all the support that you showed throughout the entire year in empowering, especially the rapid recovery team, to do a lot of the cool things that they've done to help keep Main Street, High Street, and our business districts busy with people. Just very thankful that, through all this craziness, that we're delivering a budget that I think is very conservative, financially speaking, but it speaks to the priorities that counsel has articulated, and improving the neighborhood, supporting the small businesses, providing the best public services possible while growing our large business base. So with that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Audience, city council, anything they want, anybody in council wants to bring to all of our attentions at this time?
Mayor Moeller, I'd like to, this is the city clerk, Daniel Tiedemann, speaking. I'd like to take a moment to introduce a new hire, working with myself in the office. This is Colin Gross. He's our deputy city clerk, and he will be assisting me with our general duties in the
All righty, I'm sure he's already bowed and waved and smiled and hammered. Thank you, Colin, for accepting this challenge. Both you and Daniel, right now, are working in jobs which aren't like they were three, four, five, six, seven years ago. So thank you both for accepting the challenge as our new city clerk and our new deputy clerk, and it makes our team stronger with you two guys being on it, so. Any other comments from council members? All right, request for executive session?
Yes, sir. Just for one item tonight, and that is to consider the purchase of property for public purposes.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion that we go into executive session for that stated purpose?
Vaughn, so moved.
Second. Fear, second.
Motion made by Vaughn, seconded by Fear. Roll call vote, please, go to executive session for that stated purpose.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Moeller?
Yes.
Motion adopted.
Question for the law director, real quick. We do not need that extra motion for economic development, do we on this one, or do we?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. All right, so the time is 7:57. We will now go to executive session. Now, we'll take a session just to adjourn the regular meeting. Thank you.
All right, Mayor, we are off the record on Zoom. In one moment, I will turn off the microphone.